During our executive session. So we'll move on into the regular agenda. And the first item would be a service request for Ashbrook Meadows Water Main. That's, I think, out off the Woodlawn Road area. So I'll let Jessica bring that up to us.
Yes, this is just a standard service request for a proposed 10-mot single-family development off of Poplar Flat Cemetery Road in the Poplar Flat and Woodlawn area. They're proposing a six-inch water main for us and asking that we take that into our public system upon its completion. Plans have been reviewed and approved in-house. And I just need the council to adopt and approve the request so that they're submittal to the Division of Water can be initiated.
All right. Does anyone have any questions of Jessica on this? It's a pretty routine request and not a large development.
Correct. It's just 10 lights.
All right. I know Councilwoman Hart is going to recuse from the vote. If I could, I'd ask for a motion then to approve the request for service of Ashbrook Meadows to be brought into the city's water system.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Hibs. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Doones. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Let the record show that Councilwoman Hart recused herself in that vote. Second item then, I guess Jessica, is our bid tab for our bulk chemicals?
Yes, this is our, it's February, and every February we do an annual bid for all of the chemicals that are utilized within our water and wastewater treatment facilities. So this year, the bid tabs for the water and wastewater are highlighted for recommended low bidder are in yellow. And again, this is pretty standard. I kind of looked in to see what the gradation of whether these were up or down from last year, and for the most part, they're pretty close to the same price as last year. There's a chlorine went up about 10%. Others remained pretty flat, or maybe went down a couple of percent. Others went up just a little. So not going to have a large impact on our overall chemical pricing for the year. But it looks like they were very competitive. I guess I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Jessica, are any of these companies locally owned or locally located?
There are a few local that have representatives or sales representation within the area, within this territory. But a lot of these chemicals are manufactured in other states. So, and there's only maybe a handful of producers of those chemicals across the country. So again, a lot of, there are some vendors, some are just basically bidding for maybe the same manufacturer, but are bidding with different distribution, transportation networks, and whoever has the, I guess it would be the license or the sales territory to actually sell that chemical in this region.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If we don't have any other questions, I would entertain a motion then to approve the chemical bids per the ones recognized by our engineer that are highlighted in this presentation to be accepted.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Doones. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Sheckles. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Light sign. Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Next, we have a bid tab for our cable internet department building in the home of Yale. Well, that, this is for the year building package. It's just the building package itself, not the construction or erection of the building. I think that's correct. Is it right in the home? Hope he's with us.
Sorry about that. I was muted there.
That's okay.
We received three bids for a modular pre-engineered steel building based on our spec. We had three vendors that responded to our solicitation. Olympia, based off, in Pennsylvania, Kentucky Steel Buildings, local, and Dura Beam LLC. Dura Beam met all our specifications, and they had some great references. We would have preferred to go with somebody local like Kentucky Steel, but they didn't provide us the correct gauge that we wanted to see. Dura Beam has done a lot of work for other cities, and they are the lowest bid. So that's the one we're recommending.
Now, home, didn't you also say that the Dura Beam includes the doors and the other beam, the other bid did not?
That's correct. The Dura Beam included some of the overhead doors and man doors as well. Overall, it was a better deal.
Yeah, because it looks like there'll be six overhead doors in this package as well.
That's right. And I did talk to a couple of the other cities that bought metal buildings from them, and they were pretty happy with those doors, as well as the workmanship of the buildings and material. This will be basically with all the engineering, the blueprint, insulation. And like you said, we'll need somebody to help us put it up, and a lot of that would be local. So the majority of the work will be done by local contractors.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions of Mahome on this bid tab? He's recommending the lowest bid, but it also appears to be the best bid in terms of references, as well as the everything that is included in their package.
Crazy question, but has this been budgeted this year, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And are we on that number in the home, as far as what we budgeted?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of Dura Beam for the pre-engineered steel building for our cable and internet department.
Go move, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody wants it.
Looks like David Doones was second on that. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Mahome will be talking to us again a little later. Next, we have the minutes from the City Council, January 26. Are there any additions or corrections? All right. If we don't have any additions or correction, we'll approve those by unanimous consent. We'll move on then to our financial report for January review, and Aaron Boz, our CFO, will cover that with us.
All right, thank you. As you guys pull that attachment up off the agenda, just real quickly, January was quite a bit better than December as far as expenses go, so cash was a lot better. Just get right into it. General fund revenue for the month came in around $695,000. Surprisingly, this month, our cares revenue was the top tier on revenue for the general fund. We got the remaining $367,000 in cares funds deposited that month. So occupational license fees are down considerably during the month of January. It's not due to lack of work. We're actually in the midst of transitioning to the new software. That began kind of the last week and a half of January. So we are in the process of getting that going. So she was, the tax administrator was down for quite a bit during that last part of January, so we were unable to process those returns. But she's back up and running, so February should be really strong in occupational license revenue, and that will, based upon the amount of work that I saw come in through the mail, that's going to continue on into March, too. So we should have some good months coming. $158,000 is what we booked in January. Even with that low month, we're still at 64% of budget taken in through the end of January, around $2.8 million in occupational license fees. Just to round out some of the other odds and ends of the revenue for the month, vehicle tax was up a little bit. We got a few checks that were lost in the mail, so we typically run about $15,000 to $20,000 a month on that. In January, we saw about $41,000. We had, I believe, two months almost there. And then up at the top, that little bitty sliver, 2%, just to let you know, we've started to receive reimbursement from the TAP grant in Kentucky State for the sidewalk project. So that was $11,000 in January, but in February, we've already received almost $300,000 from them. So we should start seeing additional funds come in to cover that sidewalk project. Year-to-date revenue, we're about $7.2 million, or 65% of our current budget, but if it's approved, the mid-year budget amendment, that would bring this down to more around 61% of budget on that amended revenue budget. Onto expenditures. From December, we dropped $325,000 to $742,000 for the month of January. 51% of that was salaries and benefits and normal things there. We had $76,000 in that Phase III grant program that was paid out early in January. And then we had our annual PVA assessment fee there. That runs about $40,000 a year to get the information from them, so we can process our property taxes. Year-to-date expenditures were about $6.8 million, or 62% of budget. And again, based upon the amended budget that we'll be looking at next, that would be closer to around 59% of budgeted expenditures. On the combined utilities, we had revenue of $3.4 million. 85% or $2.9 million was service charges through the different departments. We started to receive reimbursement. We have a $1.6 million revenue line item in sewer for federal grants, and we started receiving payment from them for the Rowan Creek project. We received $360,000 from them. So that money's starting to roll in. 1% of the late fees. We have, the governor disallowed us from charging late fees all the way up until January 1st. So this is the first month we're actually going to start seeing revenue here, as I just pointed that out, as we did re-implement those late fees. We had amongst all the utilities about $19,000 in late fees, tamper fees, things like that. And then we had quarterly interest income posted to the combined utilities of $21,000. And that's from our CD certificate investments at bound credit. Year-to-date revenue through the combined utilities was coming in at $22 million, or 48% of our budget. And on to expenses, those dropped significantly from December due to, again, we didn't have that extra pay period and just some invoice timing through our purchase power and cable affiliate fees. And then construction costs were down a little bit, just again, probably timing of some invoices there. Some of the larger items are listed there, and I, after I produced this and was just looking at it, I realized that the biggest piece of the pie I put is other. So I figure I'll break that down for you just a little bit. I try to keep that a little bit smaller than the others, but, so just some of the other items that fall into that category, just general office supplies, things like that, that some of the larger items. It looked likely we had some fiber equipment purchases, about $100,000. We purchased a chipper truck for the garbage department, and that was around $50,000. Chemical fee, or chemical costs at the water and sewer plant were around $50,000 for the month. And then we've been, the electric park department's been doing pole inspections, and that was around $52,000 also. So year-to-date, we're at $23,000 or $23 million in expenditures, around 48.2% of the budget. Cash increased $562,000 to 15, just over $15 million. And of all of our certificates, we posted $38,000 in interest income during the month of January. Anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Anyone have any questions of Aaron for this evening? Or you can always give him a call if you have something that you'd like to, or stop in to see him if you have any other questions. Thank you, Aaron. I think we all appreciate these reports are very useful when we try to dissect those larger financial reports, getting this information broken out from there this way makes it much easier for us to understand. Thank you. Okay. Follow that up with, we do have a second reading for our mid-year budget amendment. Did a first reading last week. I would ask our city attorney, Audrey Hayden, to do a reading of the summary, and then we'll have to have a formal vote to do this amendment.
Okay. Mayor, can you hear me? I know I was having some feedback earlier, but I scooted my iPad over, so hopefully it sounds okay.
I think you're, I think you're good right now. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to be looking at my computers and not at the screen. Okay. Summary of ordinance number B 2021-01. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, ordinance number B 2020-08, the city of Bardstown's budget ordinance for the fiscal year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Whereas, an annual budget for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 was adopted by the city council of the city of Bardstown on June 23, 2020. And whereas, there have been unanticipated changes in both revenues and expenditures during that period of time. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Bardstown, Kentucky, that Section 1, the annual budget for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 be and is hereby amended as follows. Budgeted general fund revenues increased from $11,181,400 to $11,896,395. Budgeted general fund expenditures increased from $10,943,380 to $11,475,745. Section 2, the annual budget is hereby attached hereto reflecting the above referenced amendments to the general fund revenue and expenditures that comprise the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget for the city of Bardstown. And it's set forth on the table. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. The summary was certified by Audrey Hayden, city attorney.
Thank you, Audrey. Does any of the council have any questions on the amendment? I know we talked about it at the last meeting. If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve the amendment on the second reading. We'll take individual votes. I do need a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'm going to. But.
I think that was Bill Shekels.
It wasn't Bill Shekels, but I'll be glad to. I might make a motion to approve the summary of ordinance number B 2020-01. It was read by city attorney.
I think it's, is it, it's, would it be correctly, B 2021-01, Audrey?
What did I say?
2020.
Mayor, did I misspeak? I think that's.
Let me, let me correct my motion, and I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the summary of ordinance number B 2021-01 that was read by the city attorney.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Williams. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor will do individual votes. Signify by saying aye. We'll start with Councilman Doones.
Aye.
Councilman Shekels.
Aye.
Councilman Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Buckland.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hart.
Aye.
And Councilman Hibs.
Aye.
All right, motions carried. And thank you for your help on this. And Aaron, thank you for getting all this together. The good news is it was really a positive change and not one that was significantly negative, so that's the best part of it. All right. Motion's carried. I've asked Mahome to kind of give us kind of an update on our cable and internet this evening. If you all saw last week, Charter and Slash Spectory made a presentation to the Nelson Fiscal Court about, they are in receipt of some federal dollars to provide internet service in some underserved areas and counties throughout the United States. So this was, their presentation was based on Nelson County, and I just felt like it was important for not only the council, but our staff and the community to understand our footprint on the areas that we are currently serving, not just within the city of Bardstown, but throughout Nelson County. So I'm letting Mahome go through these maps and our footprint of our cable and internet services for all our market.
Thank you, Mayor. David here helped me put together a map, kind of explain, you know, some of the work we've done the last three years or so. We've been making extensive efforts and trying to reach customers in the county, especially during the pandemic. Some of this, what you're looking at here, can everybody see my map here?
Yes.
Okay. So the blue is our service territory or areas where we have service currently, and a lot of that is at least going back four, five years. But what I wanted to highlight was some of the, some of the areas we've worked on more recently. Out on the, on the east end, where we've kind of talked about some of these areas in our committee meetings, but never really discussed them. So a lot of the Stevens Lane was one of the areas we worked on last year and our previous fiscal year, and so was Chapel in Taylorsville. And then we've been, we worked on Solitude in 1819 fiscal year, and then going on the south and west side, Harden and Leslie, Boston, Keith Knod, Pittsburgh. And then to the south, we've been recently working on Bear Creek and south side of Potashaw. So our, our expansion over 30 miles of plant in just the last year alone. And so we, during the pandemic, we knew this was kind of important for students and for teachers, and so as you all have allowed us with budget, we've been building out as far as we can where it's affordable and expanding our territory or our service area. What was presented here are some of the areas we're studying.
Mom, it's all the same thing as Pam, like it'll make it not stick.
It's fattening.
So some of the areas we've been working or would be planning to fill the gaps is right here. Again, we've got some more areas to fill on the east corner, northeast corner of Nelson County, a couple of these roads here, and, and some out here on Boston. And these are areas we continue to work on based on your guidance and budget. Some of the criteria as we've been looking at was, you know, how active customers have been requesting for services in those areas. We, we collect actively all the calls that come in requesting for services, and from there, we determine the cost to build those, those areas. And typically between $1,500 to $1,700 per passing is where some of these outliers or county, you know, the cost to build them per passing. What was presented last week, and we kind of overlaid our service area with what was presented. And as you can tell, some of the proposed areas are areas that have been already served. And my understanding, some of the grant is actually for areas not served and so, or underserved. And so we're, we're, we're thinking some of the, there might be an, either information that's not gotten to the FCC or some other issue that, that some were, some overlapped of what areas we already have services are getting reported as not. So we're working on that to see, you know, why this was, you know, presented as an area that's not currently being and served. And so, but those areas are served. Lastly, I wanted to show you some of the house counts. You can see the passing, the densest areas and the least dense areas as you go out. And so the city has always been focused on trying to get the most dense areas, getting those developed, and then using the funds from there to try to serve the areas that are sparsely populated. To the south of the Bluegrass, that is currently a Bluegrass area, I mean, time spectrum area. So I, we don't have any data in terms of what customer actually has coverage down in here. But as you can see, over time, the, as, as more homes are built out there, more services are requested. With the city of Bardstown has been continuing to provide and build its footprint and still has plans to continue to reach out customers in the county. Some of these different colors that you're seeing are actually census, census blocks. This is just one census block. This is another census block, and so forth and so forth. And you can see wherever there's. And we, you can see wherever there's density, our, our plans and, and expansion have always followed. You know, that data. So. We're still trying to figure out with the SEC to, to make sure some of these areas that we already have services are. Are, that they're aware of them and, and making sure that. If it is for underserved areas, that those are noted as well.
Does anyone have any questions on the home?
I, I would like to say something, Mayor. I heard today the, the governor say, or one of his spokespeople said that. There is talk of the state getting internet to all these rural areas now is. Would, would that affect the way we think about trying to serve those areas now or, or not?
So there. A lot of that is usually wireless. Wireless services are. Are usually, you know, if you, if you have, if you bring fiber services to a community. That is a, a better investment and, and more future proof and meets the demand of just not today, but the future. The wireless. Proposals on the table, you always have to keep up with the equipment and the replacement and, and, and so forth. And so. I can see the state trying to provide some sort of partnership in serving. Areas that are, you know, cost prohibitive to build. But overall, I don't see that affecting what we've already done and where we're heading. Because it's, it's highly demanded.
Yeah, Joe, I'd ask Nahom kind of a similar question. This, this proposal from Spectrum as well as the governors. It's not going to impact anything we're doing on the short term that we already have budgeted. And if I remember right, Nahom, I think you said that. Even if they get started with this plan, that it's, it's a year away from them being able to really get started. Is that correct?
That, and that's right, and it's a matching program and it's also, we don't know the exact details. Of, of, of how that's going to unfold, we just have to wait and see how. How this is presented. It'd be nice, most majority of the calls we get are south of the Bluegrass where we're not in terms of requesting for services, so. We hope those. Areas will get resolved and get their connectivity. Because they, you know, Spectrum is the closest to those customers and so it'd be nice if that was reserved, better served than anywhere else. But in terms of our plan, we'll continue to reach out to customers and, because they're adjacent to our system or close to where we already serve.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the home? This was. A very informative, this mapping that you and David Evans did is very informative and it gives. Gives us a much better feeling for how large a footprint we really have throughout. Not just Bardstown, but the county as a whole for cable and internet and of course with the fiber. And the other thing we've always found is that. Our pricing is more than competitive many times less than. The same service in adjoining counties and we provide as much speed and. I think our service also to our customers is very strong and more local, so. That is always a positive and I think that's something that our customer base understands and appreciates, so.
That's true.
Keep up the good work and we'll just keep. Running our operation like we have been and obviously if something happens between Spectrum and Charter and, and the governor's plan that. Ends up providing. Coverage in areas that doesn't make sense for us, you know, that, that's okay, so. Anyhow, anybody have anything else to say on this presentation? All right, thank you, Nahom, and thank you, David Evans, for putting this report together.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move now to the campus master plan and Rashay Jennings. I think is going to cover that with us. This is a request from Bethelm High School for their campus here in, in town.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so basically campus master sign plans, as you all know, is it, has been extended. With an amendment to the ordinance to also include schools. And that's why this has come before you tonight. So they currently do have four signs, which is the maximum capacity for a sign within the city limits under normal circumstances, but they are a campus, so they are allowed to request more signs. So what they're proposing is a fifth sign that will be on the side of the building and that was included with your all's application. And it's about a hundred square feet, but the overall elevation size for that particular building is three thousand square feet for that particular size. So in taking that into account, normally whenever we have four business signs under the normal sign ordinance, I'm just giving you all some perspective here. Normally, whenever you have four business signs total, the building signs go to five percent. Given the building square, square footage on the elevation and the size of the sign square footage, they're at three point three, three percent. Of the overall building size, so where it is five signs, I don't see a huge issue with this at all. They've kept it relatively small, it's designed well, and they wanted to have something on that side of the building, so. Given normal regs and what they're proposing, I don't see an issue with this whatsoever.
So they're not, they're not doing any changes to their existing signage that they have on their other. You know. Free mounted signs out, you know, on the. Front of the high school as well as front of their, the Sagio Prep building and so forth.
That's correct. They're keeping all four of their regular signs that they have. They're not, they're not modifying them in any way. And then they're just adding this fifth sign to go on the side of the building, which is the Bethlehem emblem.
Okay.
What does that say, like Bethelm High School on it, Rashay, around that logo?
Yes, and I'm pulling up the application.
It's kind of, it's, it's real blurry to see it.
It says lighting the way since eighteen nineteen, I believe. That is their emblem and I'm double checking this with what I have. Yeah. So their emblem says lighting the way since eighteen nineteen and it could also have Bethlehem on it as well, but they haven't specified that necessarily, but. Overall, the sign design and the size seems very reasonable to me.
Any other questions of Audrey on this request from Bethelm High School? If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve based on the recommendation of, I said Audrey, Rashay Jennings. For this sign addition for Bethelm High School.
So moved, Mayor.
And a motion by Councilman Buckman, is there a second?
I'll say it then, Mayor.
Thank you, second by Councilman Hibs. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Rashay.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
All right, the next is board appointments. These three are all reappointments. Housing Authority Stephen Hamilton for a four-year term, Air Board Jerry Rocha for a four-year term. Excuse me, and then on the Cable TV Programming Committee, Guthrie McKay is for a reappointment for a three-year term. We're happy that these, these guys are all veterans of these boards, so we're happy they're. Agreeing to serve another term, so I'd ask for a motion then to approve the reappointment of. Stephen Hamilton for the Housing Authority, Jerry Rocha for the Air Board and Guthrie McKay for the Cable TV Programming Board.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion then by Councilwoman Hart, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
I think that was Councilwoman Williams. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motions carried. Next item on our agenda is the, anything from the city council members to bring before the council this evening? Okay. Then we'll move on then to cemetery deeds. We have. Purchase of one graves site from Beverly Horton and Teresa Elaine Harden and then. Gary, are these three people each transferring two grave sites? Is that how they read this?
Yes, sir, they're transferring the graves.
Okay, Lisa, you said each one of those are transferring two grave sites?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So we have Richard Colter, Wayne Kurtzinger and Joseph and Deborah Kurtzinger, all three are transferring two grave sites each. No discussion, we can approve this by unanimous consent. All right, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. I don't, I don't have a lot, but I do have a few things particularly. To talk about in relation to vaccines on the mayor's update and that seems to be the question we get every day. Late last week, Friday, the governor announced that they were going to distribute. Another round of vaccines to the, each county that was going to be the equivalent of about one percent. Of the county's population and as of Friday, we didn't have any dates, but. The way that's going to work out here in Nelson County is on February the twelfth. Through the Lincoln Trail Department of, the Health Department is, there'll be a, another vaccination. Going on here. Excuse me. You were able to, that, we, we posted that this morning, but. You had to go on to their website, L T D H D dot com. To register and that's, that opened up this morning, so I'm pretty sure that's probably full by now. For that February twelfth date, but there's also some more dates that are available and. People from other counties can go to these other counties because this is a Lincoln Trail, so. There'll be other dates in Mead County, Marion County and Harden County, so. Those people here that may not have got on this latest one. Will possibly could register for those in Need and Harden and Marion. And then we also found out that it looks like. The state is going to partner more with pharmacies throughout the state and I think Walgreens here will be the first one. That I believe will have some capability of the vaccines. And of course you can still go. Onto vaccine dot K Y dot gov. And register for these other regional sites and also on Friday, the governor. Announced that there's four new regional sites, one in Covington, one in Glasgow, one in Murray and one in Bowling Green in addition to the other. Regional sites, so. The good news is that there's more of these regional sites coming online. As well as, we're going to have another round here. I don't know the total number of vaccines that are available here, but. If you do the math and they sent us the full one percent, it should be around four hundred to four hundred and fifty doses, but. We don't know that for sure. We didn't get, get that actual number, but. Based on what the governor's announcement was, that's, should be pretty close. That brings us to where we're at as of this morning. Forty-two hundred and eighty-eight cases we've had COVID since the start of tracking this. There's currently three hundred and ninety-five act, active cases, people who are quarantined and sick with the virus. And we now have reached thirty as the number of people who have died as a result of COVID, so. Just numbers to keep in mind is, we still want to encourage everybody to continue to mask up and keep their distance as well as. There are hand cleansing and. The more people we can get vaccine, the better, and these vaccines again are for phase one B, that's the seventy-year-old and older. That this next round that'll be here locally will be available for. And last but not least, we know there's a huge ice and snowstorm predicted to come into our area beginning tomorrow. And I just want to let everybody know that our. Staff has been preparing for this since yesterday. The electric department particularly knows that. With all this heavy amount of ice, if it does in fact materialize, it's definitely going to possibly cause some outages, so we've got. All of our staff ready, plus we have two private companies on standby to assist us in restoring. In repairing any of the outages we might have in the electrical. And then of course the Public Works Department for the streets. They are, they're getting all their equipment ready for tomorrow, beginning tomorrow, then. Each of them will of course have staffs working around the clock, obviously not every staff member can work. For twenty-four hour period, but we'll be staggering on to try to provide some coverage throughout the. The storm as it, as it develops and just have to be patient, but we want people to understand that the staff is. Preparing for the worst and obviously hoping for the best. As this storm develops, so just want to let you all know. We're, we've done, we've had to prepare for these before, so it's not like we've not been through them, but. People have to be patient, there probably will be some disruption and people just have to be patient and. Understand that when this happens, it just takes time, a lot of times to. Diagnose the problem and actually put the repair people in place and then they're also working under some very. Trying elements at the same time, so hopefully people will be patient and we just hope and pray that the impact here will be. Minimal, but we're preparing that like it would be, it could be significant, which time will tell. Okay. I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have anything else to bring before the council this evening? If not, thank you. We went a little bit longer than normal, but we had a lot on our plate tonight and I appreciate everybody's time and. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Buckman. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Thank you, Coach Rowe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried, be safe tomorrow and.